Let's call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise deflegedly.
Plenipotentiary to the flag of the United States of America. He's a very public representative and one nation of their God. He is responsible for the liberty of the people.
Any changes to the agenda?
The council will note that a secondary revised agenda had been provided. The change in the secondary vision was to move the appointment of the EDA member down to general business. The mayor has indicated that he would like to abstain from that since he works with the appointee. Other than that, the agenda, if there are any agenda ever may not change.
All right.
Motion to approve agenda as it.
Motion by Timmerman or as it ended?
As amended, yes.
Motion by Timmerman. Second by Seeperside. All in favor will do roll call. Amanda. Don.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Go to aye as well. Passes for zero, agenda is adopted. And the first thing we have on here is the, we have a proclamation. And I'm excited to, I'm excited to read this and announce it, but I understand we have some representatives from New Prague and Lakeville schools on this. Let's go, Ms. Adams, Nicole Adams, are you on?
I am, here I am. Thank you for having us, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for being part of this. Did you, before I read this or go ahead, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or I just noticed you were on the call, so I want to make sure to acknowledge you.
Sure. No, I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate the council and the city making this proclamation. As you guys are all well aware, this has been a very challenging school year. And a lot of our students have sacrificed a lot and probably no, no students more than the class of 2020. And so anything that we can do to recognize what they've lost, but not only that, the way that they have handled it with such grace and dignity, I really appreciate that. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for your recognition.
Well, we're grateful for everything you do and of course grateful for all your students. Superintendent Bowman, did I see that you were on as well, Lakeville Schools?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I would echo Nicole's, her gratitude and the statement that she made. And just also say to the Elko New Market community, the resiliency these kids are showing, I think is remarkable. I shared with our board last night, I, I think this will become one of the most sociologically and academically studied classes in, in a generation or two, just simply because of what they've had to, had to deal with through no, no direct action of their own. Their direct actions have been about being resilient and being helpful in the community. And I think that's been true all across our students, our senior class. So thank you so much for honoring them and, and taking on a proclamation. It's, it's a wonderful gesture and appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
It was the least we can do and you, both school districts have just done a tremendous job of providing leadership during this time. And it's not, not the most thing, it's not the most fun thing, it's probably not what either of you signed up for. So thanks for your steadfast leadership. With that, I'd like to read this proclamation. So this is a, this is proclamation number 20 dash oh two declaring June 1st through June 7th in 2020 as Class of 2020 Graduate Week in Elko New Market. Whereas Class of 2020 Graduate Week in Elko New Market is designated to celebrate graduating high school seniors within, within the Lakeville area, New Prague schools, as well as college graduates within Elko New Market. And whereas graduating students in the, in Lakeville area schools, New Prague schools and college graduates through their accomplishments and outstanding achievements have contributed tremendously to the Elko New Market community. And whereas the graduating students are the future educators, medical workers, researchers, purse responders, nonprofit staff, small business owners and leaders of the city, state, nation and world. And whereas, where, excuse me, whereas there are more than 1,300 graduating students enrolled in Lakeville area, area and New Prague schools. And whereas, as mentioned earlier, during the week of June 1st to 2020, Elko New Market will celebrate the achievements of graduating students. Now, therefore, as Mayor of Elko New Market, on behalf of the City Council and the City of Elko New Market, I hereby declare the week of June 1st through June 7th, Class of 2020 Graduate Week in Elko New Market. Very proud to be reading that. All right. What's that?
Was there a virtual class?
There's a virtual class, there is, there is a virtual class. Go to Lakeville. Thank you both for being on. Obviously welcome to today if you're interested in Russford.
Thank you all.
All right, on the public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak under public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Wolf is present.
I am present. Yeah, do you hear me?
Can hear you. How are you?
Great, great. I'm, I'm doing good. How are you guys? Good?
Good.
See, just a couple of things here tonight, our, our road projects are really cooking along. We're moving pretty quick. The weather's been good, other than a couple little rain showers here, but things dry off quick. But more importantly, the, we're starting to open up the county in phases here. We're still going to have people work at home if they can work at home. But we're going to try to, you know, when we get the okay from the, the governor to open up the, whether the whole driver's license, we could still do that by appointment, but we can't open up the whole thing yet. So it's going to be a little bit slow, but we're going to get there. So that's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Wolf? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Anyone else that would like to speak under public comment? Is there anyone on the meeting that is hoping to speak or be heard regarding the, an item on consent agenda regarding rezoning and proposed development? Okay. Not seeing anything if.
I'm sorry, this is Nicole. I did submit an email, I think to Renee this morning, so I'm not sure if you got that, and that was in regards to the zoning.
Yeah, I, we did. Right, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read that yet.
Okay.
Did you have anything further?
No, I, no, I explained it all in the email.
Okay. I appreciate you sending it, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, last call, anyone else? All right, we're closing public comment, moving on to consent agenda. There was the one, well, you already made the change on the agenda.
Regarding the change, it's not including presentation, we had the appointing an ex officio member of the city Economic Development Authority to general business so that the mayor would be able to see.
Yeah. Regarding items. Where is it, the development?
Development would be rezoning, rezoning, yeah.
Before, before we take, take a motion to adopt consent, did anyone want to pull that item or discuss further? Nicole did bring up a good point in her email that she had sent out. It wasn't something I initially realized, but I had a chance to look at it, so I'm not sure if we're still going to pull that. Do you want to maybe just summarize very clearly what?
So the summary of what the issue that Nicole had raised, and it was not discussed at length at planning commission, so this was something that Nicole had identified as an issue that she wanted the council to be aware of following planning commission meeting, is that the proposed development consists of R2 and R3 zoning. Basically, the primary difference between the two is they're both single family, R2 zoning has 70 foot wide lots, R3 zoning has 65 foot wide lots. That zoning is permitted underneath the existing 2030 comp plan, which is the comp plan that is currently in effect. It's a policy document that will require to comply by. The point that Nicole wanted to raise for the council is that in the 2040 comp plan, the way that the guidance districts are defined there, R3 would not be permitted under the 2040 comp plan. However, at this current point in time, the 2040 comp plan is not in effect and has no bearing. And quite honestly, we would not have a basis for denying the R3 zoning request in the current plan. So it's good to know. And if this is approved as presented, the council, the commission will need to, want to have a little bit of discussion about whether, how that might impact or not the guidance in the 2040 draft, the final draft. But for purposes of this item, it's a good point to know. It may create a complication with regards to 2040 comp plan, but we don't have a basis at this time to deny the request and it is consistent with our.
So in other words, legally, we could not deny it based on the fact that we're going to be shortly adopting a comp plan or if not.
Correct, that, you know, you've always had that discussion with legal when they were reviewing the plan originally. That was the feedback that they had received.
Yeah. That says, does anyone want to pull that item or any other items? Okay, the motion.
Motion to consent stand up?
Motion by Timmerman. Second by Hillary. All in favor with the roll call vote, Don.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, consent agenda passed this. Okay, on the general, oh, excuse me, public hear, well, we don't have any public hearings, so. On the general business, we have two items in general business. Item A, Boltman Bank Roundabout Project Contract.
Yes, I'd like to note for the council that on the call, we have Jake Von Gar, you will recall Jake as project manager for the roundabout design project. He'll be representing Boltman Bank for purposes of this discussion. I think the memo fairly clearly encapsulates the whole issue, so I won't belabor it with a presentation. But essentially, long and short, Boltman and Meek served as the design engineer for the project. The issues that we're talking about here related to the final design on the project, Boltman and Meek had provided us with a scope of work and a price associated with that. Scope of work, a couple of things I want to make clear for the discussion. One, we've had things that Boltman and Meek did an excellent job on the design work. They did so under a constrained timeframe. And the interaction of Boltman and Meek to the process and their ability to do it was very good. But like any large and complicated project, like if you're building a large structure, there are things that come up that are anticipated outside the scope because you can never anticipate everything in your scope. And so these are what you might consider to be like change or a zoning construction project where Boltman and Meek has identified additional time and therefore costs associated with delivering that they felt was outside the scope, and they're requesting compensation for that. So staff has had ongoing conversations with them, these are not contentious conversations. These were very amicable conversations related to those, that additional work that was done. And we agree that a large part of it is fully justified, however, there are some items that we agree to disagree on. So basically, we're presenting the information to the council tonight and looking for council direction with regards to expanded scope. I have up on your screens in the memo contained information of each of those areas that were requested for additional payment from BMI. As we go through, the council will note that a number of items staff is recommending, these are items that in staff's opinion were not accounted for, anticipated in the original scope of work or went beyond what was intended in the original scope of work as we're moving through the project. However, there are some items that we do not recommend for payment, and there's more sense of explanation in the memo. But long and short, they're either items that we feel were included within the scope of work, were items that BMI should have reasonably anticipated, we need to be included within the scope of work. And then probably the largest single item is the, part is the accelerated, has to do in part with acceleration of the project. Staff's position on that is that we want to advise before the work was completed, that was necessary to accelerate the project, that there would be additional costs associated with it. So we're kind of, to use a good analogy, if you have a contractor who's building a deck on your house and you're saying, hey, I've got the siding guys coming in, can you still get it done by graduation? And the contractor says, yeah, no problem, but didn't tell you that there was going to be an upcharge for that, and doesn't tell you till the project's done, we're making the argument that that shouldn't be on us. We did have the opportunity to be aware of it or make decisions related to timelines because of a potential increase in cost. However, we're not disputing that the work was done or that there was an increased cost to get the acceleration. Related to the complex, related to the design of the trails, it's simply staff's position that they had done previous preliminary design work related to that section of trail and previous work that they've done as a firm, and that they should have reasonably been aware of a level of complexity that might be involved with it and should have identified it within our scope of, been aware of it one main, prepared their scope of work. I can let Renee speak to that in a little bit more detail if the council has questions about that. Jake has requested the opportunity to address the council and basically plead his firm's case related to items that we don't agree on. And I would ask the council, provided my opportunity.
Jake, would you like to go next?
I would, that sounds great. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. I guess, Mayor Julius, members of the council, I just want to start off by saying thank you for letting us be involved with this project. City and Elko New Market is an important client for us and I've been attached to this project ever since the HCP application back in 2014, 2015. It's been a, it's been a joy to see it through to the end. And, and we, we understand that amendments are, are a big deal for a community and we don't want to just necessarily just release it out there. And, and I guess as mentioned by Tom in the staff memo, we are here to talk about some engineering services that were recruited in addition to the original contract and just here to talk through a few of these items. So I guess one of the things I'd like to mention is that, as you see on the far left column here, we did have an original cost request made as part of the project. And, and as Tom mentioned, we have been discussing this for quite some time. And, and through that, I think with that original amendment, we had, had called out or requested a little over $70,000. And since then, as part of the revised amendment that's now shown, we're down to about $51,000. So to us, these are real dollars, it's, it's revenue that, that we're losing on the project. But in order to be good partners and serve the community, we understand that, that it's necessary in some of these instances and we understand our faults in some of these situations as well. So I guess what, yeah, and what, what I'd like to cover here then is just kind of discussing what the differences are between that $36,300 as, as recommended by city staff and the number that we provided of 51,500 overall. I'd also like to say that at the end of the day, we, we definitely respect the decision of the city council and will accept whatever decision has come to. And just want to say again one more time that we appreciate the opportunity to, to address some of these differences between what our scope had intended and what the city staff recommendation is as well. So I think I'll just kind of address each of these items independently if there's any questions off the bat, otherwise I'll kind of walk through them similarly to the way Tom did.
Go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So for the first item for the accelerated schedule and, and, and we'll, we'll own up and I guess we'll admit that the, we, we didn't necessarily notify at the right time of, of when the accelerated work did occur. When we provided a scope of feedback in March of 2019, the, the cooperative agreement was taking some time to get, to get pushed through and, and that happens at times for sure. And we, we got our work in June. And, and at that time, I think we were, we were hopeful pretty much all the way till later in the design process that we'd be able to make up that money and the design team that we had designed was appropriate. The, the difficulty in some of these design projects is that the, the work becomes backloaded of, of when we're delivering the, the early on phases of the project with the, the 30% design, we're not necessarily digging into all the details and, and the time commitment really comes later in the process. And, and because of that, we, we were hopeful throughout that we would, we would kind of make up ground and be able to, to meet the requirement. And we didn't realize until later in the, in the project that, that, that the staff that we needed to have and to deliver on some of these submittals was, was taxing our team and was, was forcing us to, to kind of expand out the size of our team and incorporate more individuals to get this delivered. And, and that's the reason why this, this item is on the schedule here. We do understand the position of the city on when they were notified. And, and because of that, we, we have essentially cut our initial ask in half and are just asking that it's split between, between us and the city. But again, we respect the, the decision of the city. It's just, that was, that was kind of our perspective going in as we had, we had hoped to, to get this resolved as, as we went through the process and make up the time. But at the end of the day, we just, we just weren't able to.
Does anyone have any questions for Jake? You look like you're interested.
No, I have to keep, I don't want to get the phone to my phone.
Oh. Are you on your phone? Jake, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah, please do.
How, how often does the firm approach cities for similar situations like this? How commonplace is this?
For the accelerated schedule portion you're asking or for an amendment?
Well, specifically the accelerated schedule piece, because that seems like it's a, for cities, we're small, we always want to accelerate things whenever we can because we're always behind elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I would say it happens occasionally. We do try to, we try, do try to balance our workload as we go and we understand through the project process. We, we kind of track our, our expenditures on a project and it kind of forms an S curve where you start out slow, a little bit slower, and then you have a big push in the middle. And then it kind of flattens out at this, at the, at the end, once you start to understand how things are being delivered and you're, you're somewhat just submitting it. In, in this case, and, and we kind of, we kind of understand the balance, I guess, between, between cost, quality and schedule that those three of them kind of form a, a matrix of, of, of it's difficult to deliver all three of those at the same time. So delivering on a low cost, high quality, on a tight schedule is, is, is a tough, is a tough ask to deliver on, on a project. And yeah, so I'd say it, it happens occasionally, but typically if we're able to plan things out accordingly, we're able to kind of mitigate those, those concerns.
Was there anything that was just out of the ordinary that city staff maybe thrown your way that just messed up the entire bid? Or what, 70 grands a big initial asking, I even understand it's been revised down, but I'm just curious if there's anything else, if there's something maybe on our part that we could have done differently or could have done differently?
No, I, I don't think so. I, I would say a lot of it's just, as, as you move between preliminary and final design, a lot of times you just, you, you get some things that as you dive into the details, things, things become more complicated. And, and as, as we noted within our document too, there's just some complexities that, that we, we likely should have understood that, that we didn't when we pulled together that previous proposal. So no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't attribute this to staff.
You had some contingency built in on the initial bidding, correct?
Um. I don't believe so, sorry, I couldn't hear that last part.
I, I'm sorry, I was asking if you, if there was a contingency initially, originally built in to the bid when you had bid on this project?
No, typically not. With, with, with design projects like this for engineering services, it's, it's just a flat fee that we provide. I know when we complete estimates for like construction projects, we'll throw a contingency on there just for unknowns, but typically not with our engineering fees.
Yeah. And Tom, do you recall differently?
It's, it's my recollection, it was a, a not to, hourly not to exceed.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't so much a contingency, so you're out of stop.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate the, the comments Jake, give me one more. Go ahead and discuss, so Tom, can you provide the rationale for where staff is agreeing in some areas, not agreeing in other areas?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Renee to participate in this as well, because a lot of, some of these items were areas where she was more having to fall than I was and can provide the explanation, more so than the ones where we would agree that there would be additional work. So the first one was KAL Group Coordination, there was a lot of discussion with KAL Group, if you will recall, with regards to access into the site, that was above and beyond work outside of what was originally intended in the scope that was worked that clearly the city or council wanted done regarding some discussions of access, how much work we should do at this time versus more later related to access into that site. So there was time as far as meeting with those individuals and some design work that needed to be done associated with those discussions to facilitate that. We believe that that work was, is reasonably outside the scope of work and was done for the benefit of the project, and so we would recommend that. Scott County Design Coordination, as we moved through the project and the preliminary design, the council may recall that there was dollars put in there to work with here of the project in the preliminary design, that work was done. When we got to final design, the county came back with some additional review comments that we were required to respond to. That work obviously was not included within the scope of work, it required time for us to respond to the county's comments and for staff. And that was not anticipated because there was no, yeah, we aren't saying that the county was going to be done at that point. We didn't anticipate that we're going to go back with additional items that need to be addressed. On the environmental documentation item, I'm going to have Renee talk to that because that was an item that came up through the process that she was heavily involved in. Renee, do you want to talk to that, about that?
Sure. When the scope of the project was expanded to include the trails, there was some additional environmental work that was required. Wetland delineation, we read that. Oops, I don't know what's going on there. So the original wetland work that was done was for the roundabout itself. Basically, just additional work had to be done when the trails were expanded.
Related to that is the scope change request. What happened there is we, when we got into final design, we found that we need to continue striding at some of the work of the project further west on County Road 2, that was beyond the original scope document that we're providing to the feds additionally. We wanted to include the trails and expenses associated with trails within the approved project to be eligible for federal dollar reimbursement through HCP grant that we had received. And so there was a cost to go through that and time to go through that process to change. The request one was to assess the changes on geographic over the project, and the other basically investing dollars to be able to capture as well. So we feel that was justified. The accelerated project schedule, we've already talked about, rationale on both sides. The complex design related to the trails, I've already provided a brief explanation, does the council want any further explanation on that item?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. The complex design for utilities, there was some work that was done on the project to move utilities around within the project. The easy design would have been just to relay the utilities. But the thought on the engineer's part was to try and work around those utilities and increase the complexity and some rework on the design, ultimately it saved the city dollars. However, on this one, staff feels that that's. However, on this one, staff feels that that's reasonable work. I mean, anytime you're working on a project, there is a certain amount of redesign or workaround and a certain amount of value engineering that we would expect as part of the project. We don't disagree that there was a little bit of additional work that went into it, we just believe it's within the normal margin of error with regards to any project. We do have to note that that utility work design, it was to the financial benefit of the city with regards to utility. The complex design for, excuse me, just a minute. County Road Ninety-One, access to KAL group, this was related, this is an item that also came up at final design, was related to the entrance, the north entrance into the project. After we got into final design, that was an issue that the county raised in final design that did not bear out during preliminary design. So again, that was an issue that we had to respond to with regards to the county. After we had anticipated there wouldn't have to be any work related to that particular item. So that's not any fault of BMI, it's not any fault of city staff, it was county's issue that they had raised. And to be honest, it was a legitimate issue after we got into final design, but it did require additional time beyond the original anticipated scope. The County Road Two striping, Jake, do you want to explain, Jake, Renee, do you kind of want to explain that one? I don't know that I can do it service in a coherent way.
I'll let Jake take that.
Yeah, I can definitely. So that one's more related to the with the installation of the roundabout, there's there's two lanes of approach coming in eastbound into the current intersection. And with the with the proposed roundabout, we only have one lane entering from the eastbound direction. And with that, we needed to find a good way to, I guess, stripe out or gore out that the second eastbound through lane at some point, and we chose to do it where it was added further to the west. So as part of the project, we added some additional sheets and provided some additional, I guess, striping design and quantity takeoffs and inclusion of the plans for that that portion of it.
The pavement recycling design and coordination, long and short, this was work where the, in order to do some value engineering on the project, we're able to save and reduce a large portion of the base and materials that were on site. On that particular item, the city engineer had approached me and said, hey, I think that we spend a little bit of additional time on this item to save a lot of money. And I had verbally said, yes, that's the right thing to do. So we agree that that was an appropriate additional time to be spent. Seal code application, after we got into project, the county advised us that they have kind of changed their normal spec on their rules related to seal code. So we had developed a set specs for that and include that within the design documents. Is that a fair presentation of that, Jake?
Yep.
So again, not not anticipated. The right of way coordination, there was just additional time above and beyond what you would reasonably expect from the scope documents to assist with the right of way acquisition process. Renee's was been highly complimentary to me about Derek, the design engineer on this project and how helpful he was related to that. But that was, in our view, clearly above and beyond what was originally intended within the scope of work. And then project bidding, Jake, again, can you explain that? You can probably explain that better than I can.
Yeah, so we do include some base time in there for the project bidding. This one did get a little more complicated with with some of the requirements of the federal process to dig into some additional details through the bidding process. We also had, after receiving the good bid on this one from the contractor, we needed to develop a bid justification report and submit that as part of the federal process as well.
So if I'm hearing you're adding some of these things, there was a lot of, a lot of these were counted for that, that were out of the ordinary for you. But isn't that something that BMI would typically try and account for or is that something that, I don't know, it's a big overrun and you guys are very well experienced, well-known and very experienced. Did any of this stuff just catch you guys off guard or was it just, you know, probably bid a little bit too little or is there a process that maybe should have evolved that wasn't or how did we get here?
Yeah, I would I would say our original scope was probably a little too little too low, we were a little too aggressive in the way we thought we could deliver it. And then just based off the complexity of the project with with the trails and with some of these other items that came up in the design, we we realized that it was well beyond just a standalone roundabout project and there were many other items like the KAL group site, the trail facilities, things like that, that that added risk to the project and and added fee. And with that too, I would say there are some some extra items that are, I guess, pretty pretty independent to this project, like what Tom explained with the pavement recycling design and coordination. That was one one place where we had a standard design kind of implemented and and we took a different approach at it and in our estimates, saved the saved the budget about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars when it came to the construction cost. So that was one of those items that we came up, it came up identified and were able to come up with a solution that that costs a little bit more during the design process but really served a nice benefit in the overall project.
Tom, what do you ballpark, how much in total was, are we, did we originally agree to?
So the BMI, the entire work on, Renee, do you recall the project amount was?
If you give me just a moment.
You don't have to look at the exact amount.
Total fee was about three hundred thousand, I can let Renee confirm that, but that was that was from study through final design or through construction, I guess.
That's correct, and that was three separate contracts, one was a concept design phase and then there's a preliminary design phase and then a final design. So this, you know, they've been working on this project, first contract was approved in October of two thousand seventeen, so it's been a real long-term project they've been working with us.
It sounds like none of these, none of the work that was done was was unnecessary work, it's all, it was all part of the project. And the project that's came in under the bid all along so far, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And I'm done talking, so I don't know if anyone else still has any?
So, a question, if we decide to go with this staff recommendation, that's thirty-six thousand three hundred, that's a fifteen thousand two hundred fifty dollar difference from what BMI is asking, what happens then? How tough is it? Do they, do they just eat it?
Yeah, I mean, if they wanted to, they could say we're entitled to it under the contract and it feels fair and push it, but we've had discussions with BMI and they've indicated that they will abide by whatever the council's decision is, Jake can confirm that. But it's a long-term relationship and they recognize that and they trust the council's judgment based on the discussions I've had with them, I don't want to speak out of the doubt, but those are discussions we've had at the staff level. But it really comes down to, just as if when you're having contractors working on your house and they're coming back and saying, it's a question of what's reasonable and what's fair. Staff has applied their judgment and their recommendation. Jake, as project manager, has applied his judgment, his role. So to a certain extent, we're asking the council to mediate this agreement and come up with a decision.
The thirty-six thousand three hundred is on top of the three hundred thousand that we, am I correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
We would still be.
So we still would in our, how much, what, what number does that give us?
When we bonded for the project, we utilized the seventy thousand dollars as a misfortune as a worst-case scenario to make sure that we had a good project for the project. So we have actually promised to give up this request.
Okay.
Don, Amanda, any thoughts or comments?
Can I put one more thing out there? Nope, that's okay. So if if, I'm just going to throw this out there, I kind of know where you're already at, I can guess, I'm just guessing in my head. But I'm gonna, I would say, is there a way that we can split that difference with them and go seven thousand six hundred twenty-five, that would be half of the fifteen thousand that there's a difference? If we are under budget, at least that way, then we're at least paying half of the difference of what they're asking for versus what the staff is.
So you're, are you, so I understand, increase the thirty-six three number the staff recommended by seven.
Forty-three thousand nine twenty-five.
Yep.
Kind of true. Start to.
I mean, it's just, it's just a thought, I mean, a grand scheme of things, fifteen thousand over three hundred thousand, you know, just dropping the bucket, but I.
Don, Amanda?
I mean, we kind of have the opportunity to say no to all of them.
Yeah.
The thirty-six thousand. Fair.
Tom?
I just, I just split, I took fifty-one thousand five fifty, subtract the thirty-six three, and divided it by two and thought, you know, if we couldn't come up with a happy medium, then maybe the happy medium would be, but you split the difference between the two of us. I understand the whole long-term relationship thing, but what is on the two teams, with me and I just hearing, it was more of a, and still project than what they had thought.
There were a number of, there were a number of factors, and I'll argue that items that staff recommended that we should pay that just reasonably couldn't have been anticipated.
I'm going to interrupt, you just kind of, I should just, they're struggling to hear us, so.
Yeah, I agree, especially.
Sorry. I mean, I'm not saying that we have to go that route, it was just an option. I was just trying to run some numbers and see what other options we could do if we decided not to go with it, but.
What do you think, what do you think I'm asking?
I think you're at the thirty-six three.
You know me way too long.
I thought you might say something like how many.
Well, I.
That's exactly what I.
I initially was when this came up. When you look at the, if it's a three hundred thousand on project initially, if the staff is recommending thirty-six, that's roughly ten percent, which is a reasonable, I don't know, my my opinion that's a reasonable contingency that could have been built in. If we were having another term to live in, I mean, simple, I think was a little bit, right?
No, no.
Or they weren't.
No, we utilized them as the city engineer for this project.
Yeah, then we have them bid on it.
But they, no, they just, they provided us with the full work of work that was consistent with what you would expect for engineering for a project of this size and nature.
Man, I, yeah, I'd like to say zero, but I do think it's reasonable, I get how this works and I think if there's, I've never seen a construction project of any sort budget and, you know, I do think it's it's the responsibility of the engineering firm to actually bet mine even if it has a contingency, they're providing it, I think that's, but this is a long, tenuous relationship, it's a, it's within that scope of where I think it's reasonable to consider something. I would, I would support the stand for a few reasons.
Do you have a motion or a dissent?
We would want a motion from the council. There's no resolution or anything, so just a motion to follow staff recommendations.
Yep, for the additional work conducted by BMI for the final design of the project.
Allo.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're motioning to approve the staff recommendation of the thirty-six three, right?
Correct.
Motion. Second by Cephesad, motion may move back. Any other discussion before you call for vote? Hey, you want to go first? I'm there.
Hi.
I'll vote I as well, so pass, passes three or four zero. Jake, I appreciate all your hard work on this.
Sounds good, thank you for your time.
I hope this is an acceptable compromise and just really excited to see the roundabout continue for us. Thank you.
Great, yeah, thanks too.
Okay. Item B would be adopt resolution twenty thirty-five, appoint an official member to the Sioux's Economic Development Authority and ask us to get pulled from consent. The recommended person is Bob Vogel, who works outside of city staff with Bob, so I would need to stay. So with that, is there any more of a presentation you wanted to give or?
No.
Motion to approve resolution twenty thirty-five, appoint Bob Vogel as Sioux's Economic Development Authority.
A motion by gentleman.
Second.
Second by, who said, who said?
I know.
Second by Cephesad. Uh, I'll put person abstaining. Don.
I.
Jake.
Hi.
Amanda.
Hi.
All right, passes three zero and abstaining. All right, under reports.
First item, we've provided council with the first quarter financial reports. I don't have anything to add, just if you have any questions, I'm, we're on board and also our city accountant, Kelly Stewart Schultz will be on the call if you have any questions.
Don, if you didn't look at it, that was I, like, more excited to see what the second quarter launch is going to be.
First quarter is usually pretty uneventful because you're not smart enough to, you're having major trends or other issues, so.
But I don't have any questions, if anybody else. The administrative funds evaluation.
Yes, so.
I dropped the ball on that too.
So ideally, I would prefer to conduct my performance evaluation face to face with the council members. The Zoom forum is not ideally suited for that. So I would be asking, since the council is now conducting in the same room that we do it on June eleventh, if, and if we can schedule for that.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are, we'll act quickly.
Are you going to be filling out next year or this current year?
We're actually, we're actually at the point where this will kind of serve as a two-year window, so we're this time next year. I would want to point out to the council, and I discussed with Andrea, that if anybody who's already submitted their forms would like to provide updates, I think some of your guests provided them a time ago, you simply need to update it and email it to Andrea so that she can update her insurance.
Okay. Okay. Public Works, I didn't see a report.
No, Chloe had up his month the last time, so if he had anything specific for this meeting.
All right, let's just skip clues altogether. Yeah. I'm kidding, Officer Jewel, Chief Jewel.
Get that final rate.
I did, I did.
Andrea, Andrea.
Let's just give you your answer.
Quick question, I'm just going back to Tom's performance review. Is there, just so I don't get mixed up on anybody trying to change their original review, could we set a time where reviews would come in?
We put it out two weeks ahead of the next.
So reasonably, Andrea's office would need the information by next Friday if you're going to be making any changes.
Jake, I'm going to go ahead and do that first. Shall I have a reminder?
I'm sure Tom can do that.
Who's the bid on ninety-six fifty?
Yep.
Hi.
We're.
Yep, thanks, Andrea. Okay, Jake, it's your show, should we get some popcorn?
There, I keep this as brief as, very, what's that?
I, not.
All right, here we go.
I said you're allowed to speak now.
Thank you. Uh, very excited, it's been almost a year since I gave the last one, I gave the last one last June, so can't believe the time has flown by. But here we are again for our next twenty-twenty staffing study. So, uh, why do we do this real quick, Amanda was not here last year, but we do that, uh, for several reasons. It allows you an opportunity to get some guidance for both short-term and long-term, uh, budgeting, uh, what assumptions are for the future. Uh, it educates the council on what type of staffing we have, and what type of workload and demands around the police department. And give you an opportunity as the citizens' representatives to determine if we have adequate staffing to really succeed in our goal of having community value-based policing. Uh, how do we do this workload study, what methods do we use, we really use two forms, one is how much coverage do you want for police officers in the city? And then statistical data, calls, calls generated, calls taken, uh, the amount of time officers have to spend. So between those two things, and then you throw in your community value-based policing philosophy, and there's how we come up with determining how much police we need in our city. The date, typically in a year you do these staffing studies, it's Jan one to December thirty-first, but, uh, we end up doing these at the beginning, uh, so. We decided to use most up-to-date stats that we could, it takes a lot of time to generate the mining data, um, from our records management system. So we used April first of twenty nineteen to March thirty-first of twenty twenty, so a full year, four seasons, everything that can be encompassed, and it's very close to what we used for the last study. Um, we did that last study in June, so we used the data June to June, now we're using April to April, basically. So, the first part that I told you was that, um. Staffing study, this pop-up on everybody's screen?
Nope.
Nope.
You're doing great, Chief. Oh, I don't know.
You're married to me.
All right, now you can see this, uh. This spreadsheet, so this is a very complicated but, um, well-defined and well-used, uh, called a workload study. And this was designed and created by the International Chiefs of Police Association. And, uh, they said before, and I'll say numerous times, this is a tool we use to determine, um, how much police a community needs. So you can see it move here, basically uses three factors, the number of calls that we have and that we create. The weight of those calls, meaning how long does it take our officers to handle those certain calls? And then calculates the number of officers in, uh, beats or patrol shifts to cover all those calls. Basically, it breaks everything down to FPEs, which is full-time equivalent officers, which is one officer working an eight-hour shift, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. And, as you can see, this complicated spreadsheet here, I'll go through it, first is the weighting of the event. We take the types of calls, assign the weight to them, and then that determines how much time it takes. So as my mouse, is it on the screen for you, you can see that my mouse will be, okay, so the total ICRs generated, or incident calls that we create, this year was sixty-three hundred and eighty-nine. The Part One crimes, these are serious felonies and, uh, some gross misdemeanors that when we get these, they take a lot of our officers' time to process the evidence, to write the report. So they have a heavy weight of four, um, we had twenty-three of those this year. Yes, and any time interject.
Just a clarification, you said that this year, you said, so twenty-twenty.
Uh, April of twenty nineteen to the last three hundred and sixty-five days from when I calculate the data, so these are total numbers. Uh, Part Two crimes, are gross misdemeanors and some misdemeanors, domestic violence, they take a lot of time, but not as much as a complicated felony. And we have sixty-one of those, and the totals are the calls after the weighting, because we have twenty-three Part One serious crimes, they put a weight of four, it turns into a ninety-two. And so as we go, traffic accident, officer-initiated, this one is gonna, I'm gonna point out, because this is a, the weighting is the lowest over one. Which, these are the things that we start and create, and they typically do not have a big draw on us, but these are proactive police activities, these are the things that we're doing. Uh, if Josh was on here, I could add, we, you know, every time we. There's a. Uh, a weight to that, doesn't take a ton of time, but these are the things that we want our officers to have the time to do. Our other activity, the nine thousand codes, these are calls for service, um, somebody calls, needs our help, it could be relatively nothing, just, hey, I want a phone call, or, hey, there's a suspicious person. Um, so you can see our officer-initiated activity was thirty-seven hundred, and our, uh, our calls for service were twenty-six hundred. So our officers are initiating and doing more proactive policing than we are calling. These numbers, further on in the demonstration, I'll compare nineteen to twenty, so you'll have a chance, but I just wanna go through this study. So it takes all those, the arrests, assigns weights, and the total weighted events here is the eighty-one seventy-nine. Now, can we, go ahead, sir. No, it's okay.
Just back to the officer-initiated calls, so based on that number, that's like, what, about ten a day?
Yeah, over ten a day.
And, I mean, ten a day, which is simple things like closing a garage door, or?
Uh, very good example is, um, if one of our citizens requests extra patrol because they've had somebody stopping them or something, and we go sit in front of their house for ten minutes, that's an officer-initiated call.
That is, okay.
We, that person requested help, ten times throughout the week, we went there, sat in front of their house, that's an off, those are the proactive things, we're trying to prevent crime.
And that would be ten times if you sat out there in front of some.
Ten different times on ten different days, yep. Um, restaurant owner requests extra patrol because they fired a employee, we go sit in their parking lot for a half an hour at two-thirty in the morning, that's an officer-initiated, these are the proactive things. We're not reacting, we're getting ahead of the crime and stopping it, preventing it, um.
So it's related to calls, but it's often related to calls that you're continuing, okay, that's, that's actually a clarification.
Well, no, and that's a great question, um, each time we shut a garage door, it's a call, even though it's the same person. So, um. Uh, so that's the staff's number, now calculating the patrol beat, are, you take those ICRs, and the average time that it takes to handle an incident, which is point five-five or thirty-five minutes. When they calculate that all in, and these are complex studies that were done by huge organizations to make this formula. And then, uh, multiply by three, which is the, uh. Time that's not reflected in the, in the actual call load. And then you divide it by the eight-hour shift for the year, and it calculates the beats needed at four point six-two, beat shifts required for the workload. So, than that number, the patrol officers needed, now, that's the patrol beats per shift. Now, how many officers does it take to fulfill those four beats a day, meaning of coverage for three hundred and sixty-five days? Uh, and it calculates that officers are able to take days off, they're able to take vacations with their family, they're able to call in sick. And then they're also mandated to go to training, it's huge in the news, the amount of, uh, training that we've been mandated to go to for all the different, um, biases, that de-escalation training, plus our use of force training, firearms training. I just spent, uh, yesterday at the range, and so we have an officer for the entire day training us on shooting, so those types of things take us out of our beat here in the city. So, um, they factor those all in, the training ti, uh, days a year, the stick time, the cork time, and then it comes up with the number of hours unavailable for patrol. And then, it calculates with the eight hours and the unavailable hours minus the full year workload, is eighteen hundred seven hours in officers unavailable for duty. All the officers are unavailable.
Unavailable, or it says available?
Oh, it, yes, so they're unavailable the thirteenth, eleventh, thirteenth, they're available the eighteen oh seven, I thought that, thank you. Um, so, then it calculates with that amount of availability, it's one point six-two. Police officers that it takes to fill that one beat. So therefore, if we slide down here. For the eight hours a day, four of those per day for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, times the number of required beat shifts of four point six-two, it comes to a seven point four-six. Are the total FTEs or officers needed to calculate that. So, then, when you move down, we have, for staffing, five officers full-time, we have two part-time officers and a records clerical staff. When you break that down, the five hours, five full-time, and two part-time. It comes to, we have available to us five point four-eight officers on our department. Why I keep jumping, I apologize, we know it's getting motion sick. So, at five point four-two. We are minus from that seven point four-six needed, one point nine-eight officers, which is virtually minus two officers, go ahead, Kate.
So, does this, obviously, this is just in general, it doesn't take into account that one of those eight-hour shifts is overnight?
No.
Okay, so does that come into play in here at some point?
It will, I'll go over that a little bit, that, um, some of the limitations, the reason this is a guide is because we can't, it's a general, it's, uh, applied to San Diego, as it is to El Cuz, get new Craig. We plug in these numbers, and I can't put multiple things up on the screen, but I'll get to that in my PowerPoint, we'll get that. So, uh, if you look at your screen here, I have twenty-nineteens in the same spot. So all those numbers we punched in last year, you see that minus one point two-four, that's where we were yet last year, and if you remember, I said, I think we're good, because that number is closer to one, and we typically wait till we're closer to two. This tool is indicating that we're at, that two officers down, or two officers behind, yes, just the tool, I don't know why it does that, and, uh. Um, I'll go into more of that, this is the one, this is the statistical part of the two-prong analysis that we. Um, and then just some of the other things of the study, where the, uh, uh, League of Minnesota Cities, uh, uh, has us for projections, uh, for population in twenty-twenty. They have us at sixty-one hundred, we're not there, um, they have us at eighty-six hundred by twenty-thirty, and eleven thousand nine hundred. Uh, I say it's famous, it's like, it's like predicting the weather, you know, until you get to that day, it's tough, um. As some of the other things to point out are median household income, and then also, one of the things that I should have pointed out earlier, is our numbers are just not our department. We're not working, the sheriff's department handles calls in our city, those numbers are in here, and you can see that Scott County activity, I should have pointed that out. So it's not just what we're doing in the city, we have to really take into account the needs of our citizens, and the county has assisted, when we're not working on forty calls. Which is down from last year, um, oh, it was on that one, you can see above the forty down there, and last year they handled eighty-five calls. So because we've increased our coverage, and we've, uh, had more coverage due to the reschedule that we did and adding, uh, officer motelling last year. It, uh, it really helped us out, we had a lot more coverage. So before, I can't keep up both, does anybody have any questions about this statistical workload study? So, so long and short, Chief? Uh, it's a good tool, it gives us an indicator of when we should be looking at staffing, but it has limitations because it's generalized, and it's simple division. So as, as Kate had pointed out, it doesn't take into account peak times or coverage or any of those elements, which would be the second part of the study. So it's a tool to give you an indication of when we might need to look at additional staffing, but it's not a perfect tool, and so we want to make sure that we're upfront about what it is and what it isn't.
Have you run the numbers calling Scott County officials, to see if we wanna have twenty-four-seven, three fifty-five coverage, out of market specific, what that would? All of our numbers?
Um. So I'm hearing two different things, what would we need to go twenty-four-seven dedicated police department? Uh, I anticipate we need at least two to three more officers before we can safely do that, could we do it now? It'd be really tough, we could though, um, we could go twelve-hour shifts for our employees, um, mandatory overtime, uh, it would, it would just beat up our officers, and. I have, and I, you were not here last night, but the last night, we want quality coverage, not just coverage. And I don't want an officer to fall asleep at the wheel, 'cause he had to work an eighteen-hour shift for mandatory coverage when the sheriff's department can be there for us. And what I wanna try to do is limit that gap, or limit those times, and the council by approving the officer before I even started here, what we didn't fill until after I got here, that was a big step. And, um. Further in the presentation, I'll show you what this step will be to add another one for the city, what that will do. Um, but I can't keep both my PowerPoint and this up at the same time, so, how much more coverage, I think we need solid two to three more officers before we'd be able to make that distinction. Well, the key is safely, and safely do it, um, the cities that I've contacted that have that one-person minimum and do the twenty-four-seven coverage, they never have more than one person working. And at the middle of the night, when you have no backup, and your backup, you'll see some of the response times are twenty-some minutes away, um, that can be pretty dangerous. Um, not that we don't have single coverage now in the middle of the night, but we've tried to limit that as much as possible. So to get that distinction, I think, at our current staffing level would be very detrimental to the department. Also, may there anyone else with questions about this staffing study, I'll be able to get back to it again if you do see something you want to, um, revisit. So, what statistics went into that, you're gonna see this here from twenty nineteen, these numbers are red, uh, are the data, I'm seeing it. Okay, so these numbers, I'm gonna show you in graph form, but I just wanted to go over them quick so you can see them, the numbers right next to each other, if you're more visual this way. Uh, ICRs, total workload ICRs, this is everything we created in the year, went from forty-six to sixty-five-eight, that's officer-generated and call loads, but I'll get to the call loads in a second. Part One felonies, we dropped, or went up five, um, from nineteen to twenty-three, Part Two crimes went down, um, officer-initiated activity, you can see that. Officer-initiated activity, you can see that huge number there. Go ahead.
What do you count? Is there something that you can put your finger on to say why it jumped so much drastic over a year?
Yes, it is officer-initiated activity. So here's the graph that you can see a huge jump, and I'm going to go back and forth, so I'll go back and revisit it here. So the officer-initiated activity, you added, pardon me coming here, you added and authorized a whole other body to be working overnight. So we had only Melissa, which gave us three to four nights a week of no coverage. So we filled that first hole with Steve, officer of hoteling, he came on. And now we had theoretic twenty-four-seven coverage, theoretically scheduled coverage. And so what happened is December first, after the retirement of Officer Rudolph, Melissa decided to take that part-time position, resigning full-time and go to part-time. Well, there went some of our gap, came back. We have and hired Officer Carpe to fill Melissa's gap. They'll come off in January or excuse me, July, now we'll have that theoretic full coverage again. So you adding that gave proactive policing in the community a huge boost, which I am going to say is the reason, obviously, for the officer-initiated activity, but I think is a huge contributor for the part-two crime drop from seventy-three to sixty-one. These crimes are your theft from vehicle, vandalism, damaging property, hooliganism, you know, die in the park.
I like that word.
Try. It is enough to be in a hooligan. So it helps knock that stuff down.
Well, that's a good number.
It is a good number to drop the officer-initiated activity, also does include traffic stops. When you have a speeder and we go sit, we do an extra patrol, we might stop three cars speeding on that street. That's the proactive policing that is our community value-based policing. That is huge for us. And the calls for service, that has gone down, if you notice, nine hundred calls for service are quoted called. And I do believe that when you have an officer patrolling more, we get less calls in the morning of someone stole my stuff, someone egged my car. Those, I think, now, that isn't always the case because you just have brief years where you get, and this sounds weird, but an age, a group of children graduate high school and move away. And that will drop crime. You can't prove it, you can't point to those people, but when you have a population that bounces like that, we can share us a bit of procreation. I know. But see what calls you next year. And so in those numbers in graph form for Scott County Assist, also, since you added Steve, you boosted our overnights, we don't need the county to take as many calls because we have more coverage.
And if you think about it logically, if you're responding to less calls, so I'm going and I'm taking the report for that, for example, that eats up a lot of time, that frees up time for proactive policing. So there is a, there's a relationship there. If you're having to respond with less calls reactively, you have more time to be proactive. And Chief is suggesting that when you're able to do that, that helps drive, yes, the number down a bit more because of proactive patrolling has at least some effect on the actual calls for service.
Although it's theoretical, I mean, it's, you can't point, you can't prove what crime you prevented. There's no mechanism for that. And with the base of a, what we call minority report, you know, if you could predict the future, you would know how many crimes you prevented, probably you can't. But if we could guess, then that makes sense. So our total ICRs went up, that's more staffing. Officer-initiated went up, that's even more staffing. Calls for service went down, I would theorize that's even more staffing.
And we'll see one year, the chief and I were talking about this, one year just not a trending.
Right.
But so in two or three years, if we're seeing those calls or as we increase staffing, we're seeing lower levels of calls than at previous years, that would be a strong indicator that there is correlation. Although we can't identify it specifically, but there would be enough information to identify that there was a correlation.
So here's our part one, part two crimes that we said before, more graph form. And then you can see the drastic drop that the county was taking calls in our city. So coverage analysis then, so that's the stats and that's the formula. The coverage analysis is kind of the conversation we have. How often do you want police coverage and then what can you provide with the staff you have? So as I said, the staffing study, we have five full-time officers, but that's including me, and that will get more significant as we move through here. And we have two part-time officers that will be working once Officer Carpe is off of training, they'll be working day shifts on the weekends, Officer Wirth and Officer McAdoo.
All right. For the two part-time officers, what's the typical hours per week that they're working?
So they will work two eight-hour shifts a weekend and they rotate weekends, those sixteen hours a week typically.
Combined, virtual.
So the one officer works day shift one weekend? Oh, yes, for the, and then the other officer works the two-day shifts the next weekend. So again, each officer.
Your typical FTE because it's really twenty-four-seven, this house being trapped, so.
Right, that's what's trending. So their eight-hour shifts, remember, it takes us four point six two eight-hour shifts a day to cover all, for a year to cover all that.
Right.
So that's where you get that point four eight of T E in calculation for the part-time. And because our records staff, she works six hours a week, that's factored in too because that's police work that needs to be done, the records management, the statistical data. So she's calculated in our, technically, our patrol. So with our current schedule that we changed last year, I did a presentation about changing the ten-hour days with an overlap day in there, our officers are technically scheduled, we have twenty-four-seven covered due to this schedule. But we don't have enough staff to force somebody to replace somebody that has to go to court, that has to go to training, that called in at two o'clock in the morning. We just had an officer that had to go at three o'clock in the morning due to just an extreme migraine. And so checked out of service and went home, where there was no one to call in to work that. I came in earlier, but I mean, there's, you just, it takes, you need two on, but one goes home sick and we just don't have that coverage. So there's also vacation, training, as we said before, in court. So we factored in to our average officer takes up ten full shifts a year just for vacation and probably a couple of sick days in there as well, but that's their personal time. And then we'll be factoring in the amount of training days that we do and are gone in court. Right now with our current staffing, we estimate that we do have about ten point four percent of our shift coverage gone a year due to these factors.
We only offer ten vacation days a year, but that, we only offer ten vacations.
We have, we have great benefits, our officers just, now, think, everybody when they're working, well, Don, you work twenty-four-seven, but you work right at, an average week, an average worker works Monday through Friday, you get two days off. Well, due to our schedule, we get five on, two off, four off, three on, it's a goofy schedule. So what they do is by just taking three days off, you have a week off. So it allows them to get more time off with taking less vacation. So it's not like they're working themselves to death, they just combine their personal time with their days off to make a long stretch.
Yeah, makes sense.
And some use eighteen and some use six, eight, oh nine, yeah. And it, that's normal with every work environment, you got people who take more time and they have no time left in their bank, and then you have people who have huge banks. So what does that mean with that ten point four percent emergency calls are handled by the sheriff's department? They don't, the county is so big, they can't sit in El Cuzo Market doing those valuable proactive policing that we have. They have to stay central. So due to that, it leads to longer response times. And this is pretty astonishing, but our response times for emergencies went up a little bit. I don't have a good excuse for that other than there's just times when you're at one end of the city doing extra patrol and your call is at the complete other side and even go on code as fast as you can, it just takes longer to get to places. Also too, our officers, if they're in the office typing or working on a report, you run out to your car, get in your car and respond, it takes longer. So I'm not, officers all have other jobs besides being a patrol officer, they do training, they do TASER training, they're firearms experts, you know, stuff like that. So when they are entering evidence or doing that, our response times just went up. And I don't know, last year we were just luckier or the sample we pulled was better, but our emergency response time is still fantastic at four point eight minutes if you dial nine-one-one and you have an officer at your door. The county's emergency response time remained exactly the same. And you'd think that's a little weird, but my theory for that is they stay central in the county and that's just the amount of time it takes driving code three, a hundred and twenty miles an hour and then stopping and turning and driving on, you know, and watching out for deer and the curve. It's just the standard time it takes to get from the county shops where a lot of times they are stationed to here. We did really do a lot better on our response times for routine calls. And part of this, I will say, has a little bit to do with COVID, is we, in order to reduce our exposure to our officers, we've been handling a lot higher percentage of calls in person on phone. And so when someone dials nine-one-one, I've had to comment a ton, oh my gosh, you're already calling? Yep, dispatch just gave me the information. Or we're gathering data on the way you'll call. If someone says, you know, someone's suspicious outside of my house, that's not an emergency response, but we'll call right away and start collecting information. That's our response time, it could be one minute because we're talking to the person that called us and, which is important. So we knocked that down quite a bit to four point nine. And also too, what's huge about this is we have more coverage. So when you have an officer being proactive, out, not sitting in the office trying to catch up from being so busy, they're out there, even those non-emergency calls, you're able to get there quicker.
Tom, was twenty nineteen one, when we had those faster response times, that was Steve's last year, right?
He did not work here in twenty nineteen. That's scary. That's up on. That would be well. And Steve left in twenty-eight.
Okay, all right.
So I'll get him a great email from him. Scott County, you can see their response times, that actually for non-emergency calls, someone called said, there's a car alarm going off in my street, twenty-eight minutes. That's the average. So there are a lot longer response times and there's no blame on them. Their geographic area, this last year, they were also understaffed on the overnight shift where they're running in the entire county, just two officers, three or deputies, two or three deputies on in the entire county. So I wanted to make sure I said that, this is no slam on them, they're doing the best they can, they also have limited resources. We are geographically in the most southeast corner of the county and all of our busy cities are in the north and they need help too, so they go help them. So it's many factors, but what that gets to is when we don't have officers, those are your response times.
So when we've done staffing studies, and this is, I believe, our tenth staffing study that the council's been presenting over the years, you can see for those reasons, when we were looking at staffing, it was all about coverage because that coverage provides a much higher level of service, not just significantly different response times. Because if I'm in my house and I think there's somebody in my basement, the difference between five minutes and thirteen minutes is a huge, huge difference. So it's about coverage. The other aspect though is the community policing, proactive policing, which we believe does have an impact on calls, but also the quality of life for residents, and we've heard repeatedly through various forms of feedback, that that's what our community is looking for. The sheriff's office, they just respond to calls. And if they're busy, they're only responding to emergency calls. This is the barking dog issue that Mrs. Johnson has at three o'clock in the morning. It's important to Mrs. Johnson, but for a deputy who's the only deputy on this side of the county at three o'clock on Saturday night, it may not be the highest priority. And so it's the quality, it's the level of service when we're talking about that level of coverage. But as the council started to see the relationship between the staffing study as far as, okay, here's an indicator, just work volume indicates that you need a certain level of staffing, but how it needs to be supplemented with and how it ties into coverage as well in order to not only to achieve the coverage, but also provide a community range of policing type of coverage and also just have enough people on the vehicle to, as Chief indicated, not be sitting in the office doing just typing reports, but to be a proactive. And it's, and there is an art to this, it's not a perfect, there isn't a perfect science to this, but it's to educate the council and to start having discussions in the budget about what you want to do for staffing.
So total incidents by hour of the day, you can see the drop in the three o'clock to six o'clock range. And to remind you, we only had one overnight officer from December first to the end of March because Melissa took a part-time and she would work every other weekend night, so we had a couple of nights where we had more gaps because she was part-time. So you can see the calls, twenty twenty, these are incidents, you can see what officer hoteling did during those times from the year prior. These are officer-initiated things at that, and right in that dangerous time, we call her, in the middle of the night when a lot of crime occurs. But as you get to that seven, eight o'clock, you can see all the way to nine o'clock, a very steady, very busy trend in here that was from one year to the other. And I'll touch on that importance of that as we move forward here, but you can see, you do get spikes at midnight to one and from, this would be eleven and twelve here, you do get spikes and that's important to staff, where you see all these calls here are what you'd consider during the day. And we have very high volume, so something to keep in mind as we move, days of the week these incidences. This can change from year to year, but if you look, our peak calls are on a Tuesday, the incidents, everything generated are on a Tuesday. Well, you're.
Taco Tuesday?
Taco Tuesday would be, but it's very consistent, you can see within about a hundred and fifty incidents, they're all within the same, but you do have a spike on your Tuesday and a spike on a Saturday, and I think this is really year-to-year dependent. But you can see that it's during the week, we have a good call-out during the week, so you have your time breakdowns there and you have your day breakdowns there, and it's again, it's during the week, during the day, it's quite a workload. So as we move here, this is one of my last slides, forecast to the future, there's a ton of additional factors that the workload study can't fit to El Cuzo Market and with the stats can't predict the future. But some of the things as we grow as the city to consider are as we move towards that I-35 corridor, taking on more of the road, taking on more of the businesses, that our footprint expands, so do the businesses, so do the amount of accidents, so do the amount of calls. As we develop that land, hotels, small businesses are extreme call generators, human trafficking, drug dealing, theft crimes from vehicles, thefts from the hotels, these things, businesses having things stolen, these all expand police services. The homes, the amount of rooftops we have, we have a hundred and fifty homes that are coming available very soon, if not already, and those houses generate calls, but not as much. But not as much as the building and the houses, they generate a ton of calls, construction thefts, accidents at the site, stuff being damaged by kids. And I went through that Chaska growing from 11,000 to 27,000 while I was there. This home, home buildings generated a ton of call load. More housing coming online, an apartment complex. A big one is the ordinance enforcement responsibilities to the police department. We, those officers initiated, but a huge portion of those are us finding those. And today, we had five, driving around seeing dandelion two feet tall. We're stopping, we have time to do that in a proactive environment and initiate that, not just go on a neighbor calling. Now we have, of those, we had one, oh man, that was in your yard.
No.
But those type of things, the barking dogs, the having time to stop and enforce the car with four flat tires, there, those quality issue things are super important, but they do take time. And then there's more traffic from all those things as well, more crashes. Right now, the county's responsible for 35 and two. Once we get that way, right now, we exist at it all, but we don't have to write the report. So our workload, you know, on the study is way down. It's a one because we don't have to spend three hours writing the report. So that, those type of cultural things will change and put a lot of demand on our department. So our recommendation, after considering the staffing study, the community oriented policing philosophy that we talked so much about, and our coverage analysis. We took last year, your recommendation in the way that you had stated you wanted that coverage. And we put that assumption of an officer being higher gen one of 2021 in our budget, in our budget forecast, it's in there. And that was due to kind of what was said before. So given that budgetary assumption, it's already in there. Our recommendation is we keep that and then we do staff that January 1st. What does that do for our department? So Brady, we're giving you an officer, what does that do? It really allows us to create a branding position in the department. I am the police chief, I'm also a police officer, I never take offense to that because I'm proud to be called that. But I hold this dual role. I am the only chief of police in Scott County that holds that dual role. Now, other chiefs of police do answer calls when they're really busy or if somebody is sick or injured, they might take more of that role, but they're not in the schedule as an officer. I am the only officer in the schedule. So I hold that dual title and that has become increasingly hard for me in just a year. Now, there's a lot of different factors for that. Building the PD, hiring two new staff members, background new staff members. These type of things take away from my ability to be a proactive police officer, which I love. And so we create a day shift officer. This department does not have a day shift patrol officer. And we do that Monday through Friday and I revert back, I don't want to drop back, but those stats of our calls, our busiest call load day is Tuesday and you see the consistent call load during the day. Those are calls where I can't be a chief, I'm a police officer and I have to do my police work. And that takes away from my admin work, my meetings with, you know, different things that I can't do. I can't go to a lot of the meetings that a lot of the other chiefs do because I have to bring in an officer to do that, which costs, no, no. So daytime patrol officer would also be a dual role hybrid, where they would also be able to, along with me, investigate more of our own crime. There's a lot of limitations we have because I'm the only one in the city. I can't drive to Lakeville to pull data and video from a fraud report. We just don't have that capability. Hopefully they mail it to us, we try our hardest, but there's certain things we can't do. I can't get in front of that suspect's face and interview him because there's no coverage here. I have to call him on the phone and try to get him to admit to a crime on the phone because I don't have that capability. Having that new hybrid position would allow either that officer to go investigate, I can cover, or I would be able to do it and they would cover. It would allow me to do more training in proactive policing. It would allow the other officer during the day, during the week, in the summer, when the kids are off to school, be driving around doing proactive policing. I just can't do it all by myself. I take that back, I am doing it all by myself, but I can't do it justice in the, in the community value-based policing philosophy, community-oriented policing. So it allows that, it allows us less dependence. And then another thing it does is these gaps that we have due to vacation. Now I have a daytime officer that can fly to the afternoon shift when that person's sick or takes a vacation, I'm still here. It allows that daytime officer to go up to a tower position so the afternoon car can go to the night spot when they're on vacation. It allows us more to narrow down those gaps more. It, it, there's less overtime I have to pay to hold somebody over to work time because we can move and manipulate the schedule more. And another huge thing is there's only two shifts for our officers in our community to work. We have an officer that's worked here 10 years and has only been able to work one shift, which is 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. When we got the night shift, they could work that, but, you know, we did increase it there. But it would give our officers variety and they'd be able to bid for a day shift and work that. So it, it really allows more time during the day, during the week, to actually have an officer out there doing proactive policing enforcement. And it would allow me more focus on a lot of my police chief stuff that I would like to do. One of the things that you brought up and that I think fairly so is the safety, you know, audit. I have, I have been able to dedicate the time to them, like I'd like to and advertise it. That's something that can increase because with an officer during the day, I can do that without having to leave. I mean, Tom can attest how many meetings I jump up and have to leave to go to a call, which is fine, but it's just harder to do that. So. So on that.
47 minutes, by the way.
So on that note, for a decade, having the chief of police service, the daytime officer has worked in a, in a gas. But what I've seen over time incrementally as payload increases, as department grows to the hands of the chief position for doing the administrative portion of it justice, but it really, there's time that should be put in, is officer demands and the administrative demands basically went and squeezed to the middle of the proactive policing. So we're losing that during the day. What I can also see happening is we start to grow, as we start having issues. And I do remember, and this is before we had our police department regularly staff, when we did have instruction, we had calls for theft in sites and things like that that happened during the day, during the week, as you have more businesses, drive offs at additional convenience store locations, thefts from retail locations. All that, a lot of that stuff happens during the day, during the week, the reports, the follow-up on it. It will put greater demand. So what I see happening, are we at a critical mass point at this point in time? No, but we are moving in a direction where it's becoming increasingly difficult, where the chief can play that dual role. And at some point, we're gonna have to make the change. There's, you know, there's a judgment pulse to when that point in time is, but that squeeze has gotten incremental greater over time. I started seeing it happen to Steve, our prior chief, I'm seeing it happen to Brady. And all through this, there is an increasing expectation with regards to the proactive policing, the proactive nature of the department. And that's the piece that's getting squeezed the most.
Nice job, Chief.
Thank you. Great question.
So quick question for you, if we want to fill this position by January 2021, when do you have to start advertising or when do you have to?
October 1st. So, but budget season. So it'd be similar to past years that if the council wanted to fund a position, we would get to a point where we'd be looking for a level of comfort from the council that there are certain so-speak that is going to be in the budget and then we would post for it. There's always the, up until that person actually walks through the front door the first day, I mean, until you actually hire the person, you can always back out, you can back out through the hiring process, if something else needs comes up, you can delay the hiring. There's all kinds of things you can do. But we've done it multiple times, not only in police, but other positions where the council's like, no, we're hiring physicians, get them reversed. We're confident it's going to be in the budget, in the final budget. We're out raising staff to support with the hiring. There's also, there is also always the option to hire mid-year to spread the budget impact over a two-year period. I mean, those types of things come up in budget. Right now, we're recommending hiring January 1st, but these are the things that we come up in the budget side. But what we're really looking for tonight is if the council has no interest in creating that position next year, then we know and we don't have to waste time and effort on it as we start moving the budget process over the next two months. If the council is interested in it, we would recommend that we leave it in the base assumptions that we have a whole budget process to hash out whether or not it's still there at the end.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I feel like we talked about this just recently. And we were all on the board and things, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, in November, we went over projected budgets and at that time we talked, we had a, not this level of background, but it was a similar discussion.
And it's very similar to last year's and I'll, I'll say that again. I, this is the recommendation. Are we in bad shape? Absolutely not. Will we be able to do policing for the next 2021 on our current staffing? Of course. It's, it's a recommendation and I just, I don't, I will never be the leader that comes in here pounding my fist and saying, if you do not do this, there's going to be blood in the street. I'll never do that because we can do this job with the staffing. We feel very grateful for all that you've done with the police department and your investment in us to this point. And we will look at leaving this officer in and eventually hiring it as a commitment and not as a slam if you don't feel we can do it. So I told you, not you, you weren't here last year, but I told you, I've lived through the recession in law enforcement in a way when people were, we were laying officers off. I never want to be fat in a department. I never want to have to sit an officer in my chair and in my office and say, you no longer have a job because we were too big for our britches. I want to be in that sweet spot and I want to stay in front of the weight because I've also worked in that department where we were understaffed by five to seven officers and it really does take a toll on you and takes a toll on what you can do for your community. Well, that's the goal, to be in that sweet spot and to stay just ahead of the curve so we can focus and keep community value-based policing.
The, the, one of the big unknowns is what's going to happen with property tax revenues. July is now, and the May one was, I guess it wasn't, the deadline wasn't moved, but penalties were made, which basically means that, and I know there's a growing concern about the act of the room. So, yeah, I don't, you're, you're our chief of police, we got you back and we're, we all want to make sure you have the resources. Just not quite ready to pull the trigger and say we're part of the fun. To make sure we're ready to go.
Do you have the numbers from last year to sort of like, like your 10% of no coverage? What was it?
It remained the same.
The same?
We have almost all the same officers and they took the same amount of time off.
Which makes that, because we just added an additional officer.
And it would have went down, Amanda, but Melissa switched to that part-time. So it would have been a lot, it probably would have been in the five to seven had we kept that full-time officer working overnight. But because of that change and we're only now getting Brent to replace her from December 1 in July. So that's where that number will go down indefinitely once we get permanent staff. But then again, as we know in businesses and if someone leaves, someone gets hurt, it seems like you're always hiring or firing, but if we can keep that core group here, that number will go down.
I would argue that at the highest level, we're still in that building coverage phase to where we're providing reliable 24/7 through 65 coverage, which the council has identified as a role.
It shows with the, you know, how this one has been decreasing. But absolutely.
Yeah, but at the, but at the end of the day, that's still and always has been done within, their chief will be the first one to know, there's other priorities in the cities and there's financial constraints. So decisions related to staffing within the police department has this, but the other department has to be waiting against all those other factors. So intent here is to provide the council with information so that you're informed as we go through the budget process and you can identify those priorities for us as we're preparing the budget. So this is going to be one piece of information as we move through the budget process. Just the chief or his department is saying, the indicators are suggesting that we should be looking at hiring an additional officer at this point. The timing and the gift and the timing is up to the council.
Any other questions? Brady, I gave you a hard time, you did a good job.
Thank you. I would be offended if you didn't.
All right. Last two times I've said there's probably nothing for fire department, directed, so is there anything for fire department?
No, Mr. Mink, you're absolutely correct.
Rich, are you still on with that?
I am.
You have anything for engineering?
I do, I have two items. If I could get Kelly Erman to turn on her microphone. Tom, if you would not share the screen for a second, well, there she is. I don't know if you can all see her. I wanted to introduce Kelly, she's an intern with us for this summer. She's just wrapped up her software year at the University of Minnesota in civil engineering. And she'll be spending the summer at Boltman Mank. We're giving her exposure to all sorts of different things we do. And so for the next five weeks or so, she'll be in the municipal group and I'm looking for a chance to have her come down. On Spencer or something like that, so just want to introduce her and give her a chance to see what city engineers do, which is a lot of sitting and watching other fascinating presentations.
Kelly, are you rethinking your internship this fall?
What was that?
Thinking your internship with Boltman Mank yet? Or are you happy with it?
I'm happy with it. Yeah, I like what it has to offer so far, so, yeah, it's nice to meet you all.
Meet you, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
You had one more thing?
I do, I'll, I'll just answer any questions you might have and if there's none, then I have nothing.
See, no questions? Appreciate it, Rich.
Thanks.
Community developments, you had a lengthy report, I think it was a good report, a lot of detail. Anything further to add?
I do not, unless you have any questions for me. Tom, I guess the one thing I'll note is, Tom probably advised you that we are meeting with the developer of Boulder Heights next week to hopefully figure out the status of the project and how to move it forward.
Oh, that's awesome. That's, it was kind of on my mind, I was wondering when they were going to start putting policies. Anyone have any questions for Rich?
No.
Thanks for that.
Marty. Good evening, everybody. Hope you're doing well, just a couple of things. We are setting up interviews for the recreational specialists here in a couple of weeks. I had the opportunity to start our new parks commissioners orientation session. Dawn Burnham was in today and had a good conversation. I think she'll be real helpful given her background and experience in park planning. The new accelerated swing and 10 spin is going to be open here this weekend at Historic Elko City Hall Park. So see what a fast swing looks like if you want to try it. And the 10 spin is a, kind of an item that twirls around and you can actually have 10 people on it, which keeps us within the COVID-19 guidelines. The, we're working on three playground assessments because we're getting ready to work on rehabbing Woodcrest and next will be Wagner and then Little Windrose. So I'm having a third party come in and do assessments for approximately $450 a piece. I could do them myself, but I'm no longer certified. And so, and I also think it'd be good to get a third opinion on what parts of those parks And so, and I also think it'd be good to get a third opinion on what parts of those parks that we can keep. And what we should, we'll be looking forward in terms of playground safety there. Looking at a handwashing station at Wagner Park, talking to Dan Schlauchke from Schlauchke's Portable Restrooms about providing that, getting a cost on that. We've had a request from a number of people there to have something there to do that. We'll see if we can do that without any kind of vandalism. But Dan's willing to try it, and if it's reasonable, I think we'll, we'll try it. If the, if the governor goes a little higher than 10 on the COVID-19 in terms of gatherings, if we get to something like 20, 25, we'll be reopening the skate parks, because I think in my experiences, we've never seen any more than 10. I'm sure you're getting calls from skaters, as I've been getting calls from them every day. And they seem fine with, with the answer. So, we'll see around June 1st, the first or second week of June, if that will be able to happen. Working with the baseball folks to see what, after June 1st, what that will bring in terms of being able to have some kind of baseball season. Right now, I think the jury's out a little bit on that. It looks like, you know, you could hold instructional leagues. Right now, competition seems like it would be hard to do under the current restrictions. But we'll see if there's any changes in that as, as well there too. So, other than that, that's what we've been spending some time on, Corey. As you can see, is digging a lot of dirt out there. If we get some dry weather, we'll be able to make some headway a little bit on Raina Pond, and also on the Woodcrest and Windrose trails out there as well too. Other than that, open for questions.
See, no questions, so. Thank you, Mark.
You bet, thank you.
All right. C C E C. Scale, scale's not, scale executives next week, and then scale general meeting following week, so. No report there. Anything for service ordering? MBTA?
There's not meeting, right?
Josh is our I-35 guy, he was at here. Tom, did he share anything with you for our date?
He did not. The last meeting was I-35 meeting, and he shared some information.
Yeah, okay. Chamber of Commerce, I just, I met with the, the chamber president, about half an hour, so, at home last week. Nothing really new. I know everyone's anxious to see businesses opening, getting back to normal as much as possible. He didn't have any strong feelings for, you know, that the city should be doing anything, that it should not do anything, which I appreciated hearing that. Fire rescue days, which we all know is good news, so I don't know if I have anything else from that call to share.
So, just, if you guys could all go onto the chamber site, there is a posting on there with Gordon and Jewel talking about our promotion right now for graduating seniors. If you guys could just share that, that would be awesome.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely. Oh, the last thing is, our police chief will be joining the next chamber meeting representing the city, so. You said that's on Chamber's Facebook page, or is that Chair's Facebook? Did it in person?
Yes, Gordon's actually doing a video for the, I think, for me, those are the signs that we have to promote the 2020 graduates. And then the money we get from it, we're gonna use towards scholarship.
I meant the?
Oh, the meeting?
The meeting for the chamber, is that it?
The last, the last two have been a Zoom, so I don't know.
Probably a Zoom.
I would assume a Zoom again, like, for some reason. That'll be one week after technically restaurants have been open, so maybe we can do it outside. I don't know.
Wait, well, how, how big is the board?
We have?
So, it's like, yeah, I think gatherings up to 10 could be held, starting at chief first.
And it's a matter of comfortability too, with that numbers.
All right. Could either way, just please send me an invite with this in sight on the night. Okay. That's all for reports, or on the discussion that council does anymore?
I'm a little curious on how much feedback you guys got from the ordinance feeling.
Oh, you say you guys, like, everyone in the room?
I mean, I certainly saw Facebook, Facebook posts and those kind of conversations. And I don't think, I mean, it was 120?
Hundred and, hundred and, like, a little over 120 total.
122, what was that, the number that was mailed out? How many households do we have?
1,400.
This is a quiz, I guess.
Close to 15.
Because I mean, in the grand scheme, that's not a lot.
No.
And I think one of the comments that stuck with me was like, that someone was disappointed with, that the city could have gone out and provided education. But I kind of felt like that's what the letter essentially was, was education. And this was just one comment on the Facebook.
It, it was, we, we provided notice of it, we provide notices related to the common violations regularly, annually, in this letter. And we provided, there was a newsletter article ahead of time saying, hey, for coming out. And Renee can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we also did Facebook. So, there's a, there's, there's always, there's always that dilemma of, well, you could have done more to let me know, balanced against a reasonable amount of, of notice. I would argue that I should really know that I shouldn't have two foot twelve Andy lines in my yard, and I should debate it.
So, I mean, I'll be up there, I had some really good conversations with a couple people. And so, I mean, one of the, one of the people I had a conversation with brought up a really good point. And I, I had said, well, it was not intended to be a threatening letter, and this is really kind of an accusation. If you would look at it, this was, we're really looking at starting enforcement stuff more in August. But this was kind of a courtesy, that's, okay, we noticed this, we want to make it aware. And the person was spot on, and said, there's no such thing as a letter from the city that doesn't come across threat. So, and I don't know if you agree with that, but it's just the nature of the beast of, when the city is saying you're doing something wrong, we could, you know, send a parade to their house with treats and stuff to try and say, hey, this is what you're doing.
That, that's true. No matter how nice you write it, it's a letter from the city telling me I was doing something wrong. I can tell you that, based on my experience, I have initiated a community program in my career in community that didn't do proactive, especially before, so has Renee, we talked about it. The first year that you do that, your number of violations is, we, we gotta go above what we would expect. And what you tend to see is over the two following years, you tend to see a drop down. And then you get down to what I would call your transient violations, that's different people every year. And you will have a core, probably 30 to 40 properties that will, you'll be sending letters to every single. And part of what we're doing is we are changing the culture. So, through the process, we're making people aware, because we, we provided newsletters articles and other stuff about this, and some of it's common sense. So, we're educating, we're also changing the culture of the community. There is a message being sent that certain types of activities on your property are no longer acceptable, and we're gonna be proactively, proactively doing that. One of the calls that we got, I got, was an individual, and he's like, I have a great leaping, I have a great maintained yard, I've lived in the community forever. Why am I getting a violation letter? They explained to him, it's like, you're not, you got a letter advising you that this is the rule. You may have a violation, we're not sending you, but we're letting you give a heads up. So, you have plenty of time to make sure that that doesn't exist, going to come by three months from now. But the response was somewhat of a mayor, it was, the way he received it was that way. I honestly don't know that there is any way that you are ever going to get a roster mayor, but you can come by with treats and a parade, and it would still feel that way. So, our letters are generally written to be non-threatening. I'd be happy to provide you all with it, they generally are educational in nature. But anytime you are sending a letter out, there are certain elements. If it's a, if it's a notice of a warning, we have to say, hey, we saw this. This is the, what it's in violation of, and this is what you need to take care of it, and we're just giving you a heads up. If it's an actual violation notice, you have to include in there, if you're going to enforce it, what the violation, what the specifics are, what it's violating, what they need to clean it up, and when it needs to be done by. You can write it as nice as you want, but it needs to include those, it needs to include those elements. I reviewed the sample letters that have been set up by our staff. I think they're very pleasant, but they are business-like. But this was the pushback that we talked about with the council before we did it, that there would be calls, and there would be a certain level of.
Okay, Josh and Marissa, coming, putting all the specific compliments, the specific minutes that we were all in great focus of it. And I did realize, I just wanted to read it. No, I, because I was reading through all the comments, like, I just turned on my notifications, so I could see, I mean, I think. You've commented on Josh and Callie, didn't you? Nope.
So, so was there a concern with the council with regards to how it's being handled, what we did?
Not at all.
For a second guessing of what?
I want to be very clear, I have no concerns, I was just curious on, you know, kind of how that played out.
Well, and I'll, I'll even say, you know, there was one in particular, letter I got where, you know, Tom was involved in that, and Haley and Renee were also involved. And I couldn't have been more impressed with Haley and how she had, you know, she copied me on, and all the shit she had sent to the guy. And it was to a T what we would want our staff to be saying. The message is lack communicating, which was, we can't communicate no longer. Hey, this is not the threat, we're not doing anything, we're just making you aware, this is there. And I paraphrase, obviously, she just did a terrific job, and I was impressed by that. So, you know, I, I think our, our role as members of the city council is, you know, I didn't see the polls, so kind of, not been on Facebook as much, it's, I'm not getting any information on. I, I, I think that, I think our role as city council members is exactly what you guys did, which is, you know, hey, look, we're not here to send and swap you sequels or dandy lines, or, I'm just trying to make you aware, so I guess, and that.
Yeah, I guess, I would like to just add that, thank you for, to the city council for your support as we transition to this new way or new culture in our community. And I also really want to commend Haley, who's doing about 90% of the code enforcement. She does an excellent job when people receive their letters and they call and ask her questions. She's just fantastic with explaining people that, to people the issues.
I did get, I did get one person, I thought it was a little funny, but it's, I shouldn't, it was serious, but, like, well, they were pretty creeped out by people taking pictures of it.
Um, I do have to say.
Yeah, I guess I could do that.
Yeah, but I do have to say, and I did comment on that poll too, I put a picture, a larger picture that was included in our letter, and it makes you look, and thoroughly what you have up there.
What'd you get, a letter?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, it's to your series, okay.
No, I'm serious. I mean, it's serious. You have a Jeff Page sitting on the side of the garage. But then you put something out there, and then a line was really focused out there, and I thought, it looks like crap. Like, what are you doing, from somebody else, taking a picture?
Listen up. Another point is that we tried to be very consistent, and if you just, if you had exterior storage, no matter how trivial it might have seemed to one person, we just tried to be extremely consistent throughout the entire community. There was no favoritism, everybody was treated equally.
I think it comes from that. I mean, I honestly thought I was gonna get one better.
We have Ray, Haley, you need Haley over to the madness tomorrow?
I was probably just wrong too. I thought, I was like, oh, man.
What is, I'm sorry, did you have more on that?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
You know, one thing, Tom, did you send that letter out, did I, did I sign?
No, I just listened to your chat about it.
I mean, I'll bring it up if you have a test site. I did agree to sign on to the letter with the rest of Scott County mayors. Letters regarding the street impact fees, which is kind of an ongoing issue. And I'm not sure if you're as familiar as you're, but without getting into all the details of the issue, there, it's, there's basically a kind of a warmer in between BANSI, the Builders Association, and some municipalities that want to be able to be, they want to be able to assess for fees so they can complete roads and developments. So, it's not all, but not necessarily one developer. And the Builders Association is very much against that. And some in Scott County have been fighting, been fighting, leading the way. Tom's been very helpful as well. But didn't think it was something I should, I would need to run by the council, because it's really not a new issue that we've been talking more. But I did, I did agree to sign it, so, figure I can use it.
I just sent the council copy of the letter, essentially, it's the, they're just, mayors are gonna need with Senator Giselka, and lead our position with, with the House majority, and the Republican majority leader on that. Again, I, I agree with Mayor, it was an item, and it's a policy position that the council has repeatedly ratified in the end, so.
Yeah, I mean, and if anyone has questions, I'm gonna have to elaborate more details as to what exactly the issue is. But I'm supporting the letter, I don't know if there are questions, I guess, so. Any other items for discussion? Any motions for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment?
It's a motion by Terrell. But, but I still can't tell, so it's super subtle.
No.
It's backed by super sad. A little call, Amanda?
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
Aye.
John voted aye, and so, okay, so, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.